Requesting 5,208 square feet on the property legally described as tract one. Mathis Second Edition, Southwest Quarter, Southwest Quarter, Section 28, Township 102 North, Range 51 West. That is in Hartford Township. Petitioners Jessica and John Henneke, they're also the property owners, located at 462-12261 Item number eight, conditional use permit 22-51 to transfer four building eligibilities from the south half, the southwest quarter. There is an exception to the west 600 feet of the southeast quarter and the southwest quarter, and that's the end of the exception. Southwest quarter, southeast quarter, and the south half, northwest quarter, northeast quarter, southwest quarter, the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, all in Section 27. Township 103 North, Range 50 West. To the southeast quarter, there is an exception to H-1, and except County Auditor's Lot, H-2, and the exception of Gunderson Farms Tracts, that's the end of the exception. Section 22, 102 North, Range 50 West, Lyons Township. Petitioner Scott Swanson. Landowner is Gunderson Farms. That is located approximately two miles north of Crooks.
Madam Chair, if I may, your mic did kick in partway through, and I don't know why it wasn't always there. I was hearing it great up here, but I've got a screen right here and all that. So I guess I would ask if anybody heard part of what they were here for on those eight items that she read laboriously, we could read it again if needed. But otherwise, if no one objects, then I would move to approve all of those under the consent agenda. Anybody?
Anyone out there want to address any of the items on the consent agenda? I do have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second to approve all of the items on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any of those items that have been approved, you're free to go.
Scott Wick, give me a call, would you, later?
We will move on to the regular agenda. Item number nine, rezoning 22-06 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the Rural Residential District. The property legally described as Lot One, Songburg Acres Sixth Edition, Northwest Quarter, Section 32, Township 102 North, and Range 50 West. That's Benton Township. Petitioner is Robert Duslak and Lisa Larson. They're also the property owners, 467-45 Dorothy Drive. Kevin?
Kevin Hookman again. So yes, this item is a request to rezone a property, A1 Agralter, to RR Rural Residential, which would allow one dwelling per one acre of land, developed land. The property is a seven-acre property adjacent to Songburg Acres, which is on the west side of Sioux Falls, or west of Sioux Falls, about three and a half miles on Highway 38. You can see the kind of the location map here. The property has addition, is adjacent to the Songburg Acres addition. The Songburg Acres, for some history, historical background, was plotted prior to density zoning in 1988. This property here, or excuse me, right next to the Songburg Acres, there was another eight more lots that was rezoned in 1991. And then this property here was part of a rezoning request that was denied in 1992, that was decided due to concerns about additional traffic and septic systems on the property. The remaining part of Songburg Acres was rezoned in 1996 in order to characterize the development as rural residential, which is more similar to rural residential than agricultural development. So it was approved, but no lots were added. And then another request was made in 1999 to rezone this lot with 38 acres to finish Songburg Acres, as the request stated, but the request was denied due to the same concerns as before with sanitary sewer and extra traffic. The one house that's on the property was permitted as part of a building eligibility transfer in 2005. So that just gives some of the historical background of this property. Going forward with the staff report, the staff still has concerns over density and adding a large cluster of residential septic systems. This rezoning quest, request is on a small parcel of land, but there is, it may likely lead to more requests of similar rezonings of small pieces of land for development close by Songburg Acres and throughout the rest of the county. Some examples of other denials in the county in the past, recent past, included one in 2017 where a couple wanted to subdivide their lot into three more lots to offset maintenance and tax burden on their lot. And then a request in 2015 to allow residential dwellings on a property that was too small to be considered agriculture, so it was a non-standard lot. That property was not rezoned into a residential property, but rather turned into like a stable type of use for horse barn. And right now pending, there is a rezoning request for a high prairie ranch plan development that was discussed last month, and it'll be, it has been deferred for future action. The Envision 2035 Comprehensive Plan includes the property within the transition area around Sioux Falls. The transition area has the primary purpose of maintaining the rural landscape until eventually developed a residential or municipal development, and residential development should be limited unless adequate sanitary sewer and other utilities are available. The development of Songburg Acre already has approximately 53 single-family dwellings. This request is a small addition, but like said earlier, likely will lead to future requests. In previous attempts to rezone this property has failed due to similar concerns of residential encroachment onto the regular, onto agricultural area. But for some of the other parts of the property or the request, I'll bring up the site plan. As a seven-acre property, they could develop this in seven lots. The draft plan the petitioner has presented includes four additional lots to his existing house, so it'd be five total lots, as you can see there. Some photos of the site, you can see this development has gravelled roads. This is looking at kind of the entrance of the development from Highway 38. This is looking down the, where the development would largely take place along the hillside, between the hillside and the road on the right. This is looking kind of on that same hillside back up toward the petitioner's house. And then this is looking south down the gravel road that would, where the driveways for the development are proposed to take onto this road here. And then this is looking from the south up the hill, up to the petitioner's house there. And I took one picture of the wetland on the bottom of the draw, just to kind of point out the kind of landscape around the area where if there was septic failures or something to that effect, where this would go in likely to this wetland. I'll bring it back to the site plan. Due to staff concerns about the density and residential density zoning, as well as the comprehensive plan, staff is recommending denial of this request, and I am available for any questions.
Any questions for him? Guess not at this time. Is a petitioner here? Will you please step forward and state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Lisa Larson, and I live at 467-45 Dorothy Drive.
Anyone have any questions for her? Jeff?
Madam Chair, Lisa, so you heard the issues that the planning department has with this plan, you know, with the septic and all that. What are your thoughts on it?
Well, I guess our thoughts were, I knew that, I knew of the petition to have it rezoned in 99. That was the gentleman who had owned, he actually, he owned our property, and then he owned the adjacent 10 acres. And then he split those properties in two, put the housing eligibility on our piece, and then sold that to us. And originally, like, they had planned to put in more additional roads. They had planned to put in quite a few houses. And so we decided we would, you know, try, we would ask the zoning commission, because we just want to put in a few. And the most, since they need to be at least an acre, and there also needs to be a certain amount of road frontage, the most really that could go in would be the four that we kind of drew out here. You know, one you had, if you had a surveyor come out, maybe it would only be three additional lots, seeing how it would work out. That wetland area, that's not actually on our property, it's off to the side. It's off to the south of our property. And so that our property is all very, it's on a hill, it's all quite high on a hill. So we did not think there would be issues with septic problems for those. And really, it just sort of mirrors the houses across the street. If you look across, out our front, and look to the houses across the street, there's acreages, you know, there's like four acreages right across, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Answer your question, Jeff? Okay. Anyone else have any questions for her? I guess not at this time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
I'm Carol Joan Bighefner. I'm the third of four generations who, I'll give you my address first, 2613 West 28th Street, Sioux Falls. Carol Joan Bighefner, 2613 West 28th Street, Sioux Falls. I'm the third of four generations who have owned the adjacent land of Songburg Estates. And I'm, so I'm going to just give a little bit of opinion here. I use the term own land loosely, because I really feel that land is a resource that we really are stewards and trustees of. This land has been farmed very carefully by Rick and Ron Van Herdy, and we're very grateful for the years that they have provided stewardship of this land. We know, we know that land can be lost because of wind and of water, and we know that it can be degraded. And we know that it is something that we all, provides life for all of us. Housing is also a necessity, and having a nice place to live and a nice environment is a very important value for all of us. So what I would like to say particularly to this request for rezoning is that I really feel that this is an opportunity to look at, and as has been mentioned by Kevin already, there are other pieces of land and situations similar to this that are going to be coming up or have come up in the past. So what I'm really wanting to offer is a suggestion, and maybe some support to the commission about this. My sister is the one who did some research, and she came up with that their American Planning Association for Urban Planning has a kind of strategy or suggestions for conservation, subdivision, design. And so there are some principles in that document which can be used to guide the kinds of things that have come before you, such as with, starting with the goal of whatever space is being developed, is undeveloped, that 40 to 50% should be identified within, should be left undeveloped. And that then the environmental goals should be to enhance the water management, so the permeability of the, you know, so for example, Songburg Estates has gravel roads, and so maybe gravel roads is our good thing, for example. And then also the water. So that, as was mentioned, that kind of slew in the runoff area there that evidently is not part of this piece that's being requested to be rezoned, but the importance of keeping in mind also the wildlife habitat in wetlands. So specific to the Songburg, Songburg Estates, if in planning, with some of these principles in mind, and the, and the other pieces that might become, that have come up and maybe coming up in the future, there are certain maybe strategies and goals and principles that could be incorporated so that everybody would benefit. So that is kind of what I, and specific to Songburg Acres, for example, Songburg Apers abuts the gravel pit that's owned by Reynolds and Gufftison. And then there's the Skunk Creek and the hillsides there, which are really an environmentally sensitive area. And so there's a possibility with planning and looking at an overview of trying to establish corridors with like waterways and woodlands, and maybe windbreaks and things, so that the, and so the existing natural waterways are incorporated into this plan so that there is this kind of balance with both housing needs and agricultural needs and the greater environmental needs. So I'm just suggesting to the commission that as you are looking at this particular situation, but also in those in the future, that these kinds of things would be considered. And I really feel that it's an opportunity to move forward rather than maybe having, having situations that then have to be gone or reworked and piecemealed and patchworked, and actually in the long run, they turn out to cost us more than they benefit us. So I hope you'll consider that. Thank you. I support the commission and their denial, but also in the looking forward with some of these goals and strategies in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak, cares to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Rick Starnes. I live at 467-28 Dorothy Drive. I am totally against any rezoning out there for housing. We've already got heavy traffic. We do have gravel roads, which means a lot of dust getting kicked up. You add four houses at four people per home average, you know, that's 16 people. Now you're adding more quads, SUVs that don't have flags on them that go flying around that addition already. There is speed limits after so many years have been finally put in. There's no signs, but it used to be 55 miles an hour at the planning and zoning. That was written in on pencil. Dorothy Drive coming off of Highway 38 was also written in pencil on the plot. So by adding all this more traffic, excuse me, let me, can I go back here? The land adjacent to this property is a creek drainage area. It is right next to it, and it is right down the hill from it. So any accidents or problems from septic tanks is going to flow right into that, and that drains the hill addition. My home was built by Tom Clarkson in 1998, so I'm very familiar with what's been going on out there with trying to get rezoned. Somehow it kind of got snuck past all the neighbors out there that when this property was, went from agriculture, basically a shelter building, or somewhere to keep livestock, to a residence, everybody was kind of stunned. So I guess that's why there's a lot of people here from the addition right now that, I don't know if they're going to speak, but they're, they're against it from what we've We just can't see any positives out of it. There is an agreement from Benton Township that they will maintain the roads out there. That was a signed agreement with the Claxons when they first started the development. Who's going to maintain this new road? Is it going to be blacktop? Is it going to be gravel? Is it going to be cul-de-sac? There's just a lot of questions out there. But again, I'd just like to strongly urge you to deny this request. Thank you.
Rick, just a quick question. So right now the township does maintain the roads?
Correct.
They look pretty good. How many residences are out there now? How many?
I think you said 56?
53 homes?
Yeah.
Or 53 residents?
Homes, residents.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address, sir.
My name is Brad Hanisch, 6224 South Cimarron Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I'm a realtor representing Larson's and Duslak's here. And just a couple of things that come to mind when I had met with them, and they had brought me up to speed with their, what they were looking at doing, was that they were looking at adding similar looking at adding similar properties to this development on, on an existing street. So for that reason, you know, we sat down and we actually talked to Kevin a little bit and asked what the requirements for septics were. We met the one acre minimum. And also the property, again, the property sizes are going to be similar to what are already in the development. So you're adding four more properties. So, you know, understand the expansion and the request for further, you know, property owners that want to add more to this down the road, that it'll be a struggle if you approve this one, but it seems like it makes sense to the development. That's all. Any questions?
I guess not.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
I'm Donna Perry, and I live at 46713 Metal Arc Lane. I got a little squirmy when I read the note saying that there was, thank you, fifty-three houses out there. We all have our own septic tank systems, and the water is in Aquifer right below us. And I'm thinking if we add a few more, it could be, it could become nasty. Another thing, and I don't know what is written on there, when it was originally designed, there could be seven houses per well. I don't know how close to the proximity that this development would be if they were going to try and get rural water, or if they were, if there is a well there that only has a couple houses, if they were going to tap into that. I don't know that issue about the wells out there in that corner. We have, again, they were talking about the plan of twenty thirty-five, which isn't that far away to, which is a comprehensive plan already that everyone has put a lot of thought and time into. It's twelve years away. It's not that far to wait further. There's, um, where my thoughts go. Again, I've been here before when Commissioner Mr. Colby was on, and he said, you know, you've got, I think at that time, there was about forty-some houses, and he's like, you need to have a lagoon system because you're getting too many out there with just being on each individual septic tank systems. I guess that's about all I have for my notes, but I think we do need to keep it the way it is right now because it does rain, go into that slew area that he did picture, and that creek does run quite a bit. And so it was, there's going to be that drainage there the whole time. The road there, it looks nice, but there is a soft spot in one of the spots that the buses sometimes get stuck in, as some other people could attest to. So that's all I have for comment.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Patrick Ebert. I live at two-six-one-one-nine South Cardinal Drive in Sioux Falls. Looking at the map, between one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet and one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet directly to the left would be, would be my property. I'm not going to bore you with everything that the previous speakers have said about septic tanks and more traffic. I completely agree with all of that. I'm just here to agree with the recommendation for denial and, but just officially put another resident on the, on the minutes asking for the, the denial of the request.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Tony Even. I'm a resident of four-six-seven-three-two Dorothy Drive. So if you're looking at the top of the map, I would be directly across the street. And yeah, I would state that I do agree with the county to decline this request. I, in agreement with the previous neighbors that have come up, the traffic is a major concern, additional septic systems and just obstructing the habitat that we all made a choice to move up there and enjoy. I feel like that would greatly affect that whole view, the area, the, just pretty much obstruct that whole eastern portion of the property. Another thing that hasn't been mentioned, we, a lot of us are on rural water, and there already seem to be high demands on the system. There are points where the water pressure is reduced, and, you know, adding four additional properties would put greater strain on that. So I just would like to speak up and say I am complete agreement that this should be denied.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
My name's Kim Williams, and I live at four-six-seven-two-eight Metal Arc Lane, which is lower left-hand corner across the street. We've lived out there for twenty years. My wife grew up on a farm and the quality of life. We moved out of Sioux Falls because we wanted space. These folks bought the property knowing it was agriculture. If they want to live in town, there's Hartford and there's Sioux Falls. We support the recommendation. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item before I close the floor? Step forward, state your name and address, sir.
My name is Chris Buller. I'm just right across from about one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet marker there, too. I'll keep it short and sweet, on the same page with all the residents in the, in the addition. I would also like to approve the decline of the recommendation of adding those units. Any questions?
Could you state your address, too? I didn't.
Oh, sorry. Four-six-seven-two-nine Dorothy Drive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Please step forward.
Wayne Mater, forty-six-seven-one-six Metal Arc Lane. The water is definitely an issue out there. A week and a half ago, I'm on rural water, I had to call them because our sprinkler system would only go four feet up in the air. And the property that they have, I think half of our neighbors would have bought that property as an investment if they knew they could have more than one property on the two split. There was a seven acre, and then there was another adjacent property to it. So I think there's a better place for investments than trying to wreck an environment and a habitat for animals, and I just vote to deny it. I think there's about ten other neighbors that haven't talked, and I think they all feel the same way. So they're almost as shy as I am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guess I'll close the floor. Sure, step forward. Can you help here? I can't hear you.
Hey, I'm back. Tony Even, four-six-seven-three-two Dorothy Drive. Is there any way, I know some of us haven't spoken, maybe some don't feel comfortable getting up in front of a group, and that's understandable, I'm kind of nervous, too. But is there any way we could have a, maybe a raise of hands or some, just, just to show our presence, or maybe somehow get it on the, the meeting minutes that we're here, we're present, and either we approve or decline? And just, maybe that would help with your considerations of, of this approval or denial?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There would be no way to recognize, you know, there may be disputes in the minute about how many people stood up or didn't stand up. You don't have any rules, Madam Chair, so I wouldn't certainly do that, but I would just caution that there would probably be no way to recognize that in certain team minutes as to enact the exact number without having to just come up and state them in a court.
So Tony, that's the word from our lawyer.
Okay.
She's the state, she's the state's attorney, so she, we, she kind of gives us the guidelines of what needs to be done.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else about to speak before I close the floor? Okay, I'm going to close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, can I ask Kevin one more question?
Sure.
Your mic?
Kevin, you must step forward.
Can you hear me, or, can you hear me? Kevin, I was just wondering, the landowners to the east and to the south, are they the same owner, landowners? Is that somebody else who owns the land to the east and south there of their property or not?
Okay, so you can see on this property, there, the white lines are the property lines other than the red line box where this location's at. The two kind of rectangles, the, the east and the south are owned by another property owner. And they're both, they're both have no more eligibility's on them, so they're undevelopable without zoning change.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
Kevin, so do you know when this is planned to be part of Sioux Falls or part of Hartford? I mean, when are they going to extend city services out here?
I doubt it is in any plan. It's outside of the joint jurisdictional area for the city, and it's a ways from Hartford, so it's probably in nobody's plan to be annexing this anytime soon.
I know there is a, an idea to put in a sewage treatment facility within a mile or two, I think. I just throw that out there.
Any other questions for him? Thank you. Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
You know, I think this possibility does have some attraction, but it's not the time yet for that to happen. You know, I believe we will have nine-hundred-thousand people living in many hot counties by the end of this century, and, you know, there'll be a sewage treatment facility, there'll be paved roads, but today is not that day, so I would move to, to deny this project.
Madam Chair, I guess not to kind of piggyback on that, but thinking about this, if we were to consider this development or this request, let's say five miles north of Crox, just as a point of reference, I don't know that we would just carte blanche give out, essentially four new eligibility's. You know, I understand that, you know, rural living is highly desired right now, but I don't know that by just saying, well, it's because it's adjacent to an existing development that may, I don't say it's a bad situation, but adding to that situation makes it appropriate either. So I guess with that stated, I will second Jeff's motion to deny.
Okay, I have a motion in a sec, in a second to deny rezoning twenty-two dash oh-six. Any further discussion? All in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The denial has been approved. We'll move on to item number ten. I have been informed that Becky Randall will be recusing herself from this particular item. It is a conditional use permit, twenty-two dash forty-nine, to allow a Class A, in parentheses, nine-hundred-and-sixty animal units, in a parentheses, hog concentrated animal feeding operation on the property legally described as a southeast quarter, Section twenty-eight, Township one oh-four north, range forty-eight west, that is a Dell Rapids Township. Petitioner is Nick Simmsma. Landowner is Heech Living Trust, located about five miles southeast of Dell Rapids. Mason?
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. Mason Stefan from the County Planning Department. So this request is for a concentrated animal feeding operation, Class C, with nine-hundred-and-sixty animal units. The subject property is located approximately five miles southeast of Dell Rapids. Currently, the property is mostly used for cropland along with the existing, existing residents on the property. I'll go to the next one here. You can see the residents on the south, or on the east side of this property. The petitioner submitted several items for review along with the permit request. These included a narrative, a dead animal disposal plan, a pest management plan, a nutrient and manure management plan, an odor model, building plans, and a site plan. The site plan is an important aspect of any conditional use permit, and I'll go through some requirements that we look at on site plans for concentrated animal feeding operations. The address for this parcel is two-four-eight-eight-three Forty-first Avenue, and the legal description is the entire southeast quarter of Section twenty-eight Logan Township. There was no business name or project listed with the submitted documents, but Nick Simmsma is, would be the owner of the operation. The submitted site plan and odor model map were prepared by Central Crop Consulting, and then all existing and proposed buildings were put on the site plan. There will be the one new confinement barn, and there is also the one existing ag building on, for the existing house on this property as well. Another requirement is the dimensions of all buildings. The dimensions for the proposed barn would be one-hundred-and-one feet by one-hundred-and-ninety-two feet and would be located north of this farm, existing farmstead. The farm building that is currently on the property is a sixty-by-one-eighty building, but that building will not be used in conjunction with this request. The distance from all property lines to the buildings at their closest point, the proposed barn is, is proposed to be closest to the east property line, and will just be over that fifty-foot setback, but will meet that setback. Building height and number of stories, the provided site plan indicated that the building will be one-story and have underground manure containment. And the proposed barn will be a hundred feet, one-hundred-and-one feet wide, so the building inspector will need to review these plans, and the building plans will need to be registered by, will be, need to be certified by a registered engineer. And then the dimensions of all property lines, since this entire property is the southeast quarter and it is unplatted, there are no exact property line measurements, but they are about a half mile since it is the entire quarter of the section. In terms of parking lots and spaces, and, yeah, parking lots and parking spaces, parking lots and parking spaces are typically calculated for commercial and industrial uses, but the proposed land use will be for an agricultural use on a large agricultural lot, which will have plenty of parking space for the proposed use. In terms of screening, including heights and the location of, and material to be used, the petitioner did not submit any screening plan with the request, since the proposed location of the barn meets all of the required setbacks for a Class C CAFO, the proposed, or the petitioner is not required to submit any screening around the property. Finally, the existing trees on the south of the farmstead, on the north of the farmstead south of the barn will provide some screening for the barn. The request is located on Forty-first Street, as you can see, and the only waterway is that intermittent stream that kind of runs diagonal through the property. The grade, a grading plan was designed to minimize, the petitioner is required to submit a grading plan designed to minimize contamination of stormwater runoff from the manure containment facilities. Since the animals will be confined in a building with the, with underground pit for manure, both of these factors will limit any runoff from stormwater. As stated before, all buildings on this property will meet the fifty-foot setback from all property lines. In addition to the site plan, there is additional setbacks for concentrated animal feeding operations, specifically for a Class C operation. There is a quarter-mile or thirteen-hundred, one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-foot buffer between any dwellings, churches, and businesses. Other than the dwelling on the subject property, the closest dwelling is located approximately three-hundred-and-twenty feet to the northeast of the proposed barn. Additionally, there are no known churches or businesses in the surrounding area, and the closest municipality is Dell Rapids, which is more than five miles away. In addition, some CAFOs will require a state general permit for any new or expanding CAFO. One of the situations listed where the state general permit will be required is for a Class C, when a Class C CAFO is proposed to be within a quarter mile of an existing Class C CAFO. This proposed operation does not, is outside of that setback, therefore, the petitioner is not required to apply for a state general permit. The manure produced at the facility is planned to be stored in a pit under the proposed confinement barn, which will screen it from the road and surrounding properties, and the manure will be pumped out of this containment facility once in the fall and spread on the petitioner's field. And this will be injected into the field to minimize. petitioner's field, and this will be injected into the field to minimize any scent going off of the properties where it will be injected. Additionally, there are six conditional use permit criteria that we look at for every conditional use permit, I'll just kind of go over these quickly. So the proposed CAFO is located within the predominantly agricultural area with a low density of existing residents, so the addition of another hog CAFO in the area should have a little effect on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate area. The effect upon normal and orderly development in the surrounding vacant property, as stated, the surrounding land uses around the proposed CAFO are predominantly agriculture. Additionally, when intent, when intensive land uses like CAFOs are permitted, it may cause residential land uses to become less desirable within the surrounding area. However, animal production is a regular part of agricultural operations, so any future residences will be required to have a right to farm notice covenant placed on the property prior to the construction of the residence. This is a requirement for every house in the county, just stating that that will be a requirement for any new house. In terms of utilities and access roads, the petitioner will need to extend all the required utilities to the proposed barn, but the property already has a driveway off of 41st Avenue. Also, the operation is located on a lot, lot that is large enough to handle any of the parking and loading requirements. In terms of, in terms of measures to be taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, the petitioner is developing a CAFO facility. The nature of CAFOs like this has the potential to create nuisances if not managed properly. This is especially true for odor, fumes, and dust. However, staff finds that the separations between residences and this location, along with the trees on the south side of this property, will reduce any concerns about odor, fumes, and dust. Finally, the health, safety, general wirefare of the public and the commission, or the comprehensive plan, excuse me, the proposed CAFO will have to comply with the conditions of this permit and regulations for CAFOs in the 1990 revised zoning ordinance from Minnehaw County, and these rules are designated, are designed to allow for development while preventing much of the parental harms that CAFOs facility may create. That is all I have to say on that, and I'll go over the pictures that I took here. So here's the site plan, you can kind of see the blue grayed-out area above those trees, that is the proposed location for the CAFO. Here is the odor model map, so the yellow ring is the 98% annoyance-free ring, so anyone outside of that annoyance-free ring, 98% of the smell is outside of the, any potential nuisance. Anybody inside, which the property to the west and east are just inside this 98% nuisance ring. Here are the building plans, pretty general building plans, just a large 101 by 192 barn, and then here are some of the pictures. So here is looking from the driveway for the proposed facility, looking south where the trees are to the, to the existing residents. Here is looking a little bit to the southwest, to where the barn would be located, you can kind of see that the grading in this area generally flows to the southeast. And then here is kind of looking dead-on where that barn would be located, and you can see it's kind of at the bottom of that hill there. And here is looking north, so that straight north is that, is a house that is about three-quarters of a mile away, and to the, I think I have another picture of it, no, okay. So to the east of this picture and to the west of this picture are the two residences that are the closest, and they're just about a half mile away. With that, I'll go back to the site plan, and staff is recommending approval of this request with eight conditions, and I can read those if you would like me to. Are there any questions?
Any questions for him? I guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Hi, Nick Simmsma, 47749 246th Street, Dell Rapids. I guess I would like to build this hog barn, I guess, currently I work a full-time job, and my goal is to farm full-time, and this hog barn would allow me to do that, because working a full-time job and trying to farm at night on the weekends gets old. So that's kind of my goal, and that's why I'm wanting to build this barn. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
So wasn't your proposal a couple months back next to your house there on the highway? Or is that your brother's?
That would have been my brother's, so then this would be our new lo, so this is our new spot that we found.
We approved, though, the, the one right next to your existing barn, didn't we?
Yep.
Is that one done, or are you doing that one?
With all the storm damage, they're behind a bit, so hopefully after the fourth.
Okay, so that is in progress, though.
Yep, hopefully after July 4th, I'll start digging.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I guess not at this time. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Please step forward and state your name and address.
My name's Lisa Geever, 48174 Logan Street. And so when Mason was covering the pictures that he took, my property is the one that you didn't see yet, so I actually do have printouts, if the, if the commission wants to take a look at this as I'm kind of talking through my points. So as I said, my name's Lisa Geever, my husband Matt and I and our three children live within a half a mile of the proposed 2,400 hog confinement building. My family and I are not happy and adamantly against this proposal. I would like to share that I was born and raised in Sioux Falls and come from a farming family up by Britton, South Dakota, and we had been looking for an acreage for over 10 years, and when we came upon this property on Logan Street, surrounded by cornfields on all sides, with an awesome creek running through it, we knew it was the one. We wanted our kids to experience country living and all it has to offer. We made a significant investment for 30 acres and moved last year into the property. To say we love living there would be an understatement. Just being outside, the privacy, being surrounded by farming fields, enjoying the fresh air, we do a lot of recreational activities outside, just really spending quality time with the family and getting those kids off the electronics has meant the world to us. We've even got the kids actually, to some extent, excited about doing chores outside because of the property. So I wanted to share the reasons why we are against the structure being built at this location, as well as other factors we would like to be taken into consideration. Number one, impacts to us personally, our quality of life, happiness, and well-being will be negatively impacted by this building. Air quality, odor, stress, and worry would be a result of this. There will be increased traffic with hog semis and rendering truck traffic for dead animals. Significant health concerns need to be taken into consideration, dust, dirt, pathogens being spread. Pig manure is toxic, hydrogen sulfide and ammonia are two of the gases that are poisonous to humans and are linked to neurological disorders. Air emissions from the lagoons, spray fields, and hog houses have been linked to not only neurological disorders, but also significant respiratory problems. Studies have proven elevated risks of death, hospital admissions from anemia, kidney disease, and sepsis, and this is all for residents living within one to three miles from a hog farm, and our property is within a half a mile. There are environmental concerns we need to consider. These facilities pollute the air and water with toxic waste particles, and as I mentioned, our property has a creek running through it, and it flooded the road in 2011, 14, and 19. So there's considerable concern with polluting waterways and downstream impacts. The waste carries pathogens, and that bacteria from these animals and these operations are often antibiotic resistant, and studies have proven waterways are polluted. Iowa is a great example. Iowa currently has over 700 waterways polluted and is spending millions to try and clean up their water. There are efforts currently in progress to put a moratorium on any new building of these CAFOs, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Lastly, for us personally, our property value will be impacted. Having this structure this close to our property will decrease our home and property value and negatively impact our ability to refinance in the future or resell the property if we so choose. I can tell you, when I was driving by that and dreaming about purchasing it, if I would have saw big hog confinement building at the end of the road, I would have turned around and never come back. So those are the key concerns that directly impact my family, but there's some other things that I would like to share with the commission, because I feel you need to be aware of, and it needs to be considered. The first, these hogs are not South Dakota-owned. The hogs are owned by Idlet Farms out of Iowa, and as I already mentioned, Iowa's having a harder time due to all the serious health and environmental concerns being raised about these units. So I do believe this is why other surrounding areas like Iowa and Canada are knocking on our South Dakota door to start putting these up in our state. We need to learn from those other experiences. The land and property surrounding this proposed site is owned by a gentleman by the name of Dale Hesch, who resides in Brookings and has never lived on the property. He will not be directly impacted by the risks of this structure being built. The petitioner currently resides on a 240-acre parcel approximately seven miles from this location, and he will not be impacted by the risks. In addition, there will be no direct oversight. The petitioner and his family own over 600 acres in the area. They already have one of these 2,400 hog buildings on their property east of their father's house, and they have a permit, which I believe was mentioned earlier, 22-27, to build a second building on the same plot of land west of their father's house. They also have two other pieces of land close to where they all live, 80 acres closer to the father's land, and another 160 acres parcel across from the road from his brother Jeff's home. So my point is this, there are other options to put this hog confinement building, 480-acre other options, that are close to their homes. You will see that this proposal was originally at a different location, 22-28, but two acreage owners were against it, and per the petitioner's father, they paid him a significant amount of money to not build it at that location, hence why we are talking about the location near our property. There are also concerns with manure management plan, as there have been complaints made to members of the township board from people witnessing sewage being dumped on different parts of their land. This is very concerning for all of the obvious reasons, but if proper disposal is not happening with one hog building, what are we going to expect to happen with three? We do have an aerial view, which I, which I showed Mason here, so this, if you can help me here, this one is our property, and so the hog building is, it would be down to the left. The next one shows a better view of that, so that you guys can kind of see in reference where our property is to the proposed building, and actually, per your picture, it's actually closer to the road. And then the next picture has a lot on there, but I tried to make it easy for viewing, viewing is, our property is down there in the green, the proposed hog barn from the petitioner, Nick, is in the red, as you see, and then the acreages, or the acres that I referenced earlier are in the yellow with the blue, okay? So there's the 80 acres on the top right. Mr. Simmsma, the father, has the red reference there, that's where the original hog barn is right now that they're managing. Their proposed other one is going to be built on his same land, that other red dot, that was 22-27. And then the, the next one over, the next big blue section is the 160-acre parcel, and there's a 20-acre parcel in the, with the blue, the little box right above that one to the left over, that one is where Jeff Simmsma lives, and the two acreage owners that fought that hog building being built there is the little box to the right and the big acreage up there to the left. And then the petitioner lives up there on the top, which I mentioned is around seven miles away from the proposed location with 240 acres that he can put the building on. So in closing, I do want to say that I understand hogs are this family's business, and I respect that. However, nobody but a hog farm, nobody but a hog farmer wants one of these large confinement buildings close to their property for the reasons that I've outlined, and my family and I are no different. Being in the hog business, they are aware and have agreed to take on all the risks associated with hogs and these large-scale 200, 2,400 animal confinement building operations. We, on the other hand, have not. So with all that being said, we respectfully ask that this permit be denied for this location, which is within a half a mile of our property, and if the petitioner wants to proceed, that he file for a permit for this building to be built where he or other members of his family live. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Maybe later.
Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak to this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Becky Randall. I live at 48031 248th Street, and I don't know if you can go back, right where that white box is right now, my, my place is covered, and that is where, that is where I live. And I wanted to come forward because I was concerned, Lisa mentioned quite a few things about site, and if you look at the research from Iowa State University, they do talk about that the site selection is probably one of the most important things about building a hog building, and, let's see, which way does that go? So this proposed location is approximately three-fourths of a mile from where I live, and I am outside of that circle of the 98%, and I understand that I meet that criteria, but the 98%, what that really means is that for 15 hours every month during the summertime, I will have excessive hog smell that I would consider to be an annoyance. The historical wind rose data from the South Dakota Department of Agriculture indicates that the summer months are predominantly winds from the south and southeast, meaning the winds are going to all be predominantly towards my place. There is some evidence that they have documented, and Iowa State University has documented, that terrain contributes to air drainage, where sometimes we have odors where we would not expect it, and they acknowledge that it's hard to calculate and factor those topographical, that, that piece information into the wind, or into this data, so I'm mainly just talking about the wind. So some just, some suggestions should the commission decide to approve this, I would really strongly recommend that there be mitigating factors that would be put into place. I think I have, pardon me. This is from Iowa State University, it's small, I don't know if you'll be able to see it. But this lists the ways to mitigate odor, and you can see that landscaping is, is the yellow, it means that it's medium as far as effectiveness, but it's also relatively inexpensive. So even though it only has a medium effectiveness, it's not a financial hardship. Biofuellers, scrubbing, and the separation of the urine and feces are all very cost-prohibitive, as you can see by the right-hand column. So I would suggest that as a way to help mitigate odors is to consider landscaping, which would be trees and shrubbery. According to Iowa State University, some advantages to this is it to dilutes and spreads out the odor, this is one of the main things, it creates air disruption, so it creates a plume, so the odors go up in the air and are dispersed into the atmosphere rather than spread to the neighboring, neighboring residences. Dust, which is the, what really carries the odors, is deposited on the trees, there's odor absorption, and this, and the trees of the landscaping helps to intercept the particles. So I had a, I, thank you, Nick. So I had a, I thank you, Nick, for calling me and visiting with me prior to the meeting. I told him I was going to talk about trees and what I felt, how, how important I thought they would be to mitigate any odor issues. The other question that I would have for the petitioner is I understood that this was being built here because Mr. Hesch wanted the manure on his property. And I note on the manure management plan that Mr. Hesch is not listed as a recipient for any of the manure, but rather Todd Brown and the Howe Farms are listed on the manure management plan. So maybe Nick can clarify that for us when you ask him to come up later on. Are there any other questions for me?
Madam.
Yeah. Thank you. You're talking about trees. What do you think, or what do they recommend for burial trees around there?
Iowa State University has a guideline, and I can leave that, but I'm sure that the planners, I don't pretend to be a landscaper, so I'm sure that the planners and the Soil Conservation Service. Oh, I know what else I was going to say since you asked, Adam. The, they estimate that the cost per pig over 20 years is five cents. So that's what it costs to put in trees and maintain trees. And I'm not sure if the natural resource would be able to help provide some funding for that or if there would be equip, equip dollars available to help with funding for trees if that were to be so desired. Thank you. Good question. Keep me on my toes.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
Becky, so, you know, you've lived where you are for quite a while. So don't you encounter some of these smells and stuff currently?
I do. I have a feedlot of my own about 100 feet away from my house.
Which kind of animal do you keep there?
I have, right now it's Holstein heifers. In the past, it's been beef cattle. I think the, the difference for the, the literature for the odor factor is related to the fact that I have an open feedlot rather than a pit. And there's, there are odors, but you don't have, it's called the odor emission rate. And so an open feedlot does not have the same odor emission rate as what a hog confinement, or cattle confinement for that matter. If it had a pit, would have those same kinds of smells.
Madam Chair. So don't the, doesn't the Simmonsma family have a, a large cave, cave for hogs about two miles west of you?
Yes, and they have one within a half mile from me, and that is to the north. So I don't have those predominantly southeast winds. And I signed the waiver for the one to the north and west of me. And, and it's not in the wind path. And this one will be right where those historical summer winds are.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you, commissioners.
Nick, would you like to come forward and maybe you could address some of those questions, please?
Okay. So she mentioned that the people that I feed for are from Iowa. But currently, the pigs that I get and the pigs that I will be getting for these barns will all be born in South Dakota on a south farm just north of Elkton. So they're going to be born here. So they're not Iowa, they're not from Iowa. And the guys that feed for, they're just, I mean, they just won an award from Iowa, so they're very good people to work with. And then she mentioned all, that we have other pieces of land that we could put this barn on, which I wish I could put that barn over by where I live because we have ground there and we don't want to have to haul manure that far. But there's other factors that we have to factor in. And one of those is that location is only two miles from town, and we didn't think that would be a good idea to have it that close. And then the last thing would be, there ain't, the rural water line that runs along that road isn't big enough, so I talked to Rural Water, and they would have to put in a new line for a mile and a half. And we all know how much things cost these days, so that would not be cheap. So that's the reason. And then also, I will not be living at that site or at my place for very much longer. In the next year, I will be moving probably. And then with Ms. Randall about the trees, I guess, yeah, like, like she said, she currently has a feedlot. But I guess I understand her, her points. But I guess I would be willing to, in the future, if it's an issue for her, then I would be more than willing to plant trees then. If it's, I guess, I think that's a fair agreement where, let's say, what's, what the first year, these pit barns, they, the bacteria isn't built up in, in, in these pits. So that first year, they do smell worse, but the second year it should be good. But I would be willing, let's say, if the barn would get put up the end of this summer, then if the following, so the summer of 2023, if she has issues where she's smelling pig smell every day, then that following spring, I would plant trees then. And I guess if that sounds fair with her, maybe not, but. And then I guess, I guess I would like to remind you guys that we live, or this is an area that's zoned for egg. And I understand people want to live out in the country, and I feel like they're a little over a half a mile from that site, and I guess I can't see it being an issue for them. I'm not sure if they've ever driven around my barn or not, but I guess I think it, I keep it up really nice, and I use a pit treatment because, to try to reduce the crust, because I don't want to smell it any more than what they do. And I guess, and then actually, because we talked to all the neighbors. And my dad did pick up her husband one night and showed him the site, and then took him over to my current barn. And the way he talked that evening, it, they would have no issue with this new barn going up. But I guess things do change. Any other questions?
Any questions for him? Thank you. Anyone else in the, please step forward and state your name and address?
My name is Dale Whynot, and I live at 24884 480th Avenue, Garrettson. And I live all about a half a mile south of the first hog building and about three-quarter mile this other one they're going to build up by the farm. And I have never been contacted once about them first two hog barns that were being built. And they say I go around the corner up to Becky Randall's to feed cattle two times a day, so that's four trips around the corner. And in the wintertime, they have these exhaust pans running on the side of the building, which there's four exhaust pans running out of the pits of this hog barn. And you know what's in the pits, so you know what odor's coming out of there. And I have started a new acreage on my property. And you say the north winds or northwest, the wind blows that all down to where I'm building this now and the farm that I do live on yet that I have sold. And that's the, and now this one is going to be to the east of me on the same section. So I'll be fighting them kind of both directions, which way the wind blows. And he talked about putting something in the pits to help eliminate odor. Well, this barn has been there, I think, since 2016, and there has been no difference in any smell that I can ever tell. That he's trying to control the smell in the pit even. And why they run these pit fans in the wintertime, I don't know. I think it's probably just to pull this hot air down on the pigs versus running an exhaust fan. Saying, you know what, down in the pits, all this manure. If you've ever been down to the Sioux Falls stockyards and the hog alleys, you know what it smells like in the air, and saying depends which way the wind is blowing. And he said these pigs come out of, all the pigs come out of state. The feed comes out of state, and when they sell the pigs, the pigs are going out of state. So there's no benefit of these pigs coming in, into South Dakota to the, you know, they don't get told down here to Smithfield to get slaughtered or anything. They go back out of state, because I see the semis go by my place, and they go back east over into Minnesota or wherever they go. And like this place, Barney's building, it's not even on his own land. He's putting beside this Hesch barn. And I don't know if he has figured out what his property value is going to drop. I mean, if you want to walk out the door and there's your hog barn and live by that, I don't know if he's ever thought about that, the property value, what it's going to do. And not only that, but the other people around here were dealing with the same thing. And you, this Jeff Simmonsma, he wanted to build that one over on this other farm a while ago. And the only reason they stopped that is because the people over there paid him a lot of money not to build it there. So that's saying the people didn't want it over there. And they tried to, oh, stop this last one, what a, I don't know what the name was. So the neighbors didn't want that one either, and now we're building a third barn, and the people are, don't want this one either. So it's kind of like you better stop, I mean, how many barns do they want to put in here? And, you know, ruin, I guess ruin the community or whatever. So that's what I'm kind of upset with. I guess that's pretty much everything. Anybody got questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? You want to step forward again? State your name and address.
I got it. Lisa.
Lisa Giever, 48174 Logan Street. And I just wanted to respond to some of the petitioner's comments. Again, you know, there is absolutely an impact to myself and my family and our property value, period. It's proven, appraisers will confirm. Nick mentioned that the, you know, he's concerned about putting it on his 240 acres that he currently lives on, because it's two miles from the city, or over two miles from the city. But he's a half a mile from me where this barn is, which is not where he lives and which is not where Dale Hesch lives. So again, we've got a big hog confinement building, and I'm no hog farmer, and I'm not pretending to be. But I do love animals. I wish they were outside in the sun, okay, but they're not. But there's no oversight for these animals. Nobody on that property is living there, taking care of the animals. And what I would ask is that, if you want to do this, I'm not telling you how to run your business. What I am respectfully asking is that you put it on the land that you live on so that you can take care of the animals, you can deal with any emergencies that happen. And you're dealing with the rendering trucks going by picking up dead animals, and you're going, you're dealing with the smell of the odor and all the risks that you signed up for when you decided that you were going to grow up and be a hog farmer. And he said he has a full-time job. That's great. I don't know how that all works within turning into a full-time hog farmer. But at the end of the day, we didn't sign up for, to be a hog farmer, and we didn't sign up for the risks associated with that. And we are the closest property to that building, and we will be significantly impacted if this is approved. The great news is, he has other options. And I'm asking him to take advantage of the other options that don't impact, that will be right where he lives as opposed to where other people will be living, and they have to deal with it. So, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item before I close the floor?
The proponent has his hand up.
You come forward, Nick? Sorry.
So I believe Mr. Whynot said that the pigs are not born here, which they are born in South Dakota. And then he mentioned that they all go to Iowa to get killed, which most of them do, go down to Storm Lake to a Tyson plant. But then there are, once in a while, they'll have a load or two that will go down to Sioux Falls. And then the guys that feed for, they're big investors with that possible new packing plant, the Holstone plant that might go up someday. So if that would ever go through, these pigs would all get killed there. And then he also mentioned that, that the feed all comes from Iowa. Well, there's a lot of, so their feed, or their feed mill is right to be straight south of like Manly's, so just a mile south of the Minnesota-Iowa border. So there's a lot of South Dakota farmers that haul corn down, down to these guys' feed mill. And then, and then he was concerned about the pit fans, and he's not sure why they run. Well, that's just how the air circulates in, in, in these barns. So on the north side of these barns, you got these big fans, and you got curtains on the south end, so they're pulling the air through during the summertime. Wintertime, those big fans aren't running, so then the pit fans run, and they're pulling air down from the vent, from the attic, and that's how the air gets circulated. And then I know she's concerned about where I live right, right now, but there's a good possibility that someday I might be living on that farm place right there, or that's kind of the, that's my, my goal someday, which I would love to live right next to my hog barn. Like, I'm sure it's just easier if you do have issues, and you can go out and walk to do chores, which that would be nice. And the main reason why I, why we don't put it where I currently live is because of the rural water and how much that would cost to get water there. Any other questions?
Not for you. Madam Chair, I wonder, I see Kevin Brown Township official from Logan Township is in the, in the audience. I wonder if he has something he wants to say?
Our township attorney, your name?
Yes.
Yeah.
Township has no problem with it.
Will you come forward, sir, and state your name and address, please?
Getting kind of old there, Kevin.
Kevin Brown, 24415 482nd Avenue, Delaware Rapids. I guess as far as township, we really don't have any problem with them building hog buildings. I guess personally, I would like to see them build it on their own property because the landowner, Dale Hesch, doesn't live here. And that building site is rented out currently. And where that quarter land is, the quarter land right directly to the south of it, Simmonsma's own that, and I would like to see them put it there on their own property. Because when you build a hog building or a cattle confinement building, the more landowners that you get involved in it, the more headaches you got. So I would say, why don't they put it on their own property that's right to the south of this property? That's all I got to say. Thanks for coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to address this item before I close the floor? You want to come forward again, Nick?
I can answer why we aren't going to put it on our own property. So there's not any rural water that runs along our land to that quarter to the south. So the rural water line comes from the north, and it goes to the Hesch farm place, and that's, then it stops there. So we would have to bring water either from there, from the Hesch farm place. And the best spot on our quarter for the barn would be in the southeast corner, which we did think about it, so then we would have to bring water from the Baltic Sherman Highway. So that would be over a half mile, or else from the Hesch farm place. If you brought it from the Hesch farm place and you brought it south, there's all kinds of tile lines going through there. You just have issues with that. And I guess, so that's just, just to answer his question of why we don't put it on our own quarter.
Thank you. Anyone else? Step forward, state your name and address again.
When he's talking about running this water line, I have to run it from the farm I am up to where I'm going to do the two, so I know it costs money. And as far as there's tile lines down there and stuff, but the water line, they're only about three, four foot deep, the water lines, or the tile lines, and they'll be burying this water line six foot deep. So they will bore under, get these boring machines and go right underneath to put a water line in. So I don't think the water, I shouldn't. So I don't think the water, sure, it's going to cost them money, but if they want to build a hog barn, you're going to have to spend money. And this other first hog barn that he built too, it is so close to the road that when the feed truck drives up there, he has to back out onto the road to get going. There isn't room enough to turn around in the property even. So if somebody is driving down the road and this truck happens to be backing out and don't see it, boom, whose fault is it going to be? It's going to be the feed truck drivers. And same when they load pigs out, or load them, the semis have to back, back from the road onto the property to load the pigs out. So if you do this building, it has to be set back from the road far enough so the trucks can drive in there, turn around and back up to the loading areas, and the feed truck too can get turned around. And me too, I agree, there should be, if they go through, to plant trees around there. And this existing barn, they plant it right next to the crop, right up to the barn. It should be seeded down with grass from the barn out to the tree line or whatever. I mean, they tried to do something, it's cheap, because they wanted it close to the road for the rural water, so they don't have to pay to get it from, you know, there to there. The more they go, the harder, the more expensive it's going to be, and same with electricity too. It was right on the fence line, the pole, so it don't cost too much if I got to run, run a line from me to him, but it's going to cost me quite a bit to run the line from me to you. So they don't want to spend any money, but they want to build a hog barn, and they're not for their own hogs either. I mean, if they were raising the pigs, you know, and doing it themselves and wanted to expand, I don't have a problem with it either. And as far as him saying he can't build it over where Nick lives, they're selling building sites off over there. And who wants to bu, bu, build a new bu, house when there's a hog barn going up there? And the same with these people that already bought an acreage, and now there's a hog barn going up there, and they're selling these building sites off. And what's it going to do to drop this Hesch's property value down? He wants to live there maybe someday. But what's that, what's it going to be worth? I mean, I don't say, I don't know if that Hesch thought about that, but what's that property going to be worth, that building site, right next to a hog barn? I mean, you better think about it a little bit. Any questions?
Guess not. Thank you. You want to come back up one more time?
So he mentioned how, that he's concerned about how close my barn is to the road right now. Well, we put it as far back, I mean, we followed all the rules that were put in place from the, from the planning and zoning, so we're, and the reason why it's that close was, yeah, we don't want to take up any more cropland. And there, and I do have grass all around my, my barn currently. There's grass there. And he talks about trucks driving up, feed trucks and whatnot, and he thinks that's dangerous. Well, that's been up for six years, and not once have we had an accident or anything, or I've ever heard of anything. When he's driving from his farm place to the random farm place with a big old feed wagon that's taking up the whole road, where if someone came over the hill, they could easily hit him. He's talking about us, about, about our feed trucks going up to my barn each time. And I guess, I just wanted to let you know on that. And then about those acreages that he's talking about, those were sold years ago, and those were on pasture ground that we can't farm anyway. And there's not even any houses up those, and those are already sold. But we would never sell acreages. I guess I'd rather farm the ground than, than sell an acreage. Any other questions?
I guess not. Thank you. If there's no one, no one else wants to address this item, I'm going to close the floor. You want to step forward, sir?
My name is Kent Simmonsma. I'm the petitioner's dad, and when it comes to some of the, some of the things that have been said are not true. Where Nick lives, that's, that's 180 acres, you know, it's not 240. Dale Hesch grew up on that farm where we're putting the hog out. So when it's said he's never lived there, he grew up there. And, you know, they talk about feeding somebody else's hogs. Well, the cattle that are, that are, that, we got at, at least a thousand head of cattle within a mile and a half of where we live, and them cattle do not belong to the people that live there. They're all, they're all belong to somebody else. So I don't know why we're throwing stones, you know? We got to try and, we're all farmers, and we're all in this scheme together, and, and rules, everything has changed from years ago. You know, that's just the way it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I will close the floor now.
Well, let me say a couple of things. One is, I think Lisa gave one of the most articulate presentations I've heard in 12 years of sitting on this, on this planning commission. That said, I also know that there are hog barns in close proximity to places like Lyons and Jasper and other places that, I was in a, a hog barn in Jasper, and the farmer kept apologizing to me about the smell, and it wasn't that bad, I didn't think. So I think sometimes it, it does get, it does get blown out of proportion as to how bad things are, especially the fear of the unknown. That said, it does seem to me like there's a lot of stuff could be done to this project that would make it more easy to live near, and I don't think I'm ready to vote for it at this time.
Any other comments from commissioners?
I guess I'd like to just echo what he said, you know? I think there's more that could be done. I think we could, I think some trees around there would probably help it, you know, a little bit, help direct the smell around it. Other than that, I guess I'd like to hear what anybody else had to say, but I think that would probably help a little bit, maybe ease the smell a little bit.
Of course, those trees, Adam, wouldn't be there for a couple of years.
I, I understand that. But it's a start.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I work right across the road from one of these 2,400-head barns. I ain't going to say they don't smell, but I, I do think it's getting blown a little out of proportion. I guess if not here, then, then where? We can move the hog barn to a lot of different places all day long, and there's going to be somebody complaining about it. So I guess I would vote for this project, but...
Any other comments?
So do we, again, I'm not really that psyched to, to vote for it, but what could we do to make this a better plan? Do we want to put trees on this as a condition? Do we want to, you know, the rendering truck kind of stuff, we always have suggested a, a pad with the fence around it and all that, and I don't know how often they come. How often do they come?
Every day in the summertime, except for Sunday, probably.
That's too bad. I'm sorry, you're losing hope. Anyway.
I was just going to comment on the last Simmonsma barn that was approved at the county commission. The county commission did add a condition after it was appealed at the planning commission that trees must be planted after, I believe it was two seasons, if the smell persisted with the neighbors. So I don't know if you want to consider something like that in terms of trying to persuade some of the concerns, or if you want to do just they're required to plant trees, or...
Madam Chair, why, why, I mean, if that's a concern, or if that's something that would make this people happy, why couldn't we put the trees in right away?
Yeah, we could make it a condition where they have to have it up by next July, by the end of, because they would get the trees in the spring, so they could be up by next summer if you wanted to.
That'd be acceptable?
Would for me, yeah.
Madam Chair, just to clarify, the condition that the council put on, was there any requirements for height and density, or was it just kind of a, we, we kind of defaulted back to?
Yeah, I guess in the ordinance it was... Sorry.
No, it's fine. I was just asking, how, how, how is that going to be regulated or looked at, I guess?
So in the ordinance, it says the trees just must be planted according to the Minnehaw County Conservation District. So that's just what we put in the condition. So trees must be planted by this date in accordance, after consultation with the Minnehaw County Conservation District. So whatever they recommend, I believe there is a set row of trees, I think it's four rows of trees, something to that effect. There is a certain amount of rows, but that would be included in our ordinance, so there's not something you have to put in the condition.
Madam Chair, don't we have it where those trees and stuff are actually kind of designed or engineered to, you know, by the proponent to, you know, in consultation with the Conservation District or whatever? I, I wonder if we should postpone for a month and have a plan presented that shows those trees going in? What do you think?
I think we, I...
Ryan, go ahead.
I think we could move this thing forward now and with the, I don't know for what the word is, but making sure they're going to get the trees planted, but maybe with NRCS is help, probably, or...
Mason, do you think it should be added as a condition?
Yeah, I would add a condition nine, that trees must be planted by, say, probably July 1st, 2023, that'll give them just over a year, unless you want to make that longer.
Why wouldn't we want them planted by the commencement of operations?
I suppose if they're going to build this year, they wouldn't have the tree, if they're going to get them from the Conservation District, they probably wouldn't get them till next spring. So they wouldn't be able to plant until next spring. So if they're going to build this fall, they wouldn't be able to get the trees from the Conservation District till next spring, so we would give them that planting season.
I do know it has been very difficult to get product. I've heard a lot of that, only because I am an appraiser, so to speak, but it goes with the territory, especially being just about, really, the end of the season, so to speak, because we are looking at July 4th already. I can't see that it could even happen, probably within, maybe af, after, within a good year, possibly. But I do believe that it should be added as a condition.
I guess I'd like to echo off of his, I'm thinking just on the north side. I guess the south side, I'd like to see open, get the airflow in there, and you already got to grow the trees off the property to the south there. I guess is where I'd like to see it, if that's acceptable.
We can make that part of the condition if the commissioners can agree on it on a occasion.
Would that be acceptable?
I'm fine. I'd like to see it just the north side, I guess. I guess he's far enough away from the south property there, I think. Utilize it and still get a good wind flow through there, airflow through.
We typically do insist that they be replaced if they die also, don't we?
Like we have in the past.
Any further discussion?
So let's add trees and to be replaced if they die by next July, a year from this week.
Just to clarify, that is just on the north side?
Say again?
Just on the north side.
I don't know. Wouldn't we need it on the east side possibly also?
The east side, I'm assuming is where he's going to pull in, be the driveway and all that, and load out.
Still, it disrupts the airflow.
Yes. Yeah, so the barn will be orientated like that, so putting them on the east side wouldn't be very feasible. I suppose it's possible.
Well, I think we should do it. I still am probably not in support of it at this point. But that's fine, you guys don't need, there's more of you than me. Just going by way to you.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I guess I would make a motion to approve this tonight with the ninth condition, with the adding of the trees and replacing them if, if they die.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. I currently have a motion and a second to appro, to approve conditional use permit 22-49, along with the condition of number nine, to add trees.
You want me to read that?
Yeah, would you do that, please?
Yep, sure. To add trees on the north side of the barn by July 1st, 2023, and to consult with the Minnehaw County Conservation District on this, with the landscape plan. Yeah, and kept in a live state, and kept 90% survivability, I believe, is what the ordinance reads.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Bonnie?
I was going to say Bonnie will have to vote.
Aye.
Okay. Roll call? Yeah, I'll do a roll call just to confirm.
Jeff?
No.
Ryan?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Yes.
Motion is approved with vote, three votes for, two votes against. So conditional use permit 22-49 is approved with nine conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And there's no old business or new business?
Uh, there is some new business that Scott wanted to address.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I just wanted to ask, in the past two years, we haven't had a, a commission get together. I didn't know if you wanted to have one this year. I think the last time we had a summer get together was at the Safari Bar. So if you, what is the feelings of the planning commission? Would you like to have a summer get together this year or decline?
Be fine with me, especially if you're buying, Scott.
I thought it was your last year. You should buy.
Yeah, this is Jeff's last chance.
So is it a yes to go ahead then? All right. And was the Safari Bar, okay, that had a nice patio that we sat out on? Okay. I'll, I'll put together a, a survey monkey or a doodle pole and see what days work for everyone. It'd probably be like a Wednesday, Thursday, and we'll get back to you. Thanks. That's all I have for old business.
Okay. Madam Chair? Becky?
I, I guess Scott Bass from the Rural Water would be willing to come and talk to us about some of the expanding water needs in the county, and I think he's been in touch with you, Scott. I happen to be on the phone with him and about other stuff, and he...
He hasn't talked to me yet, but I'll reach out to him, and, and we can talk about what topics he might feel would be beneficial.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
You guys make sure to pick up their nameplates, too, please. And the Twins are winning 11 to nothing. Move adjournment.
I'll second.
I have a motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everyone.